Says, has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Sure, so, um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilor Kilberg. I guess a couple, a couple of thoughts, I mean, one, of course, the, the decision on whether to, refer the language in the, in the initiative petition twenty twenty-two dash zero two, that's a decision council, has to make, it's not a, it's not a legal call, it's, it's a council call, I will say, that, um, the language in that initiative petition, if it is referred, or, you know, goes to the ballot, if you will, uh, once it goes to the ballot, it, the language cannot change, it's not something that can be changed as the election, as the days roll by to build up towards the election, the, the, the language as, as referred, or as put on the ballot per the initiative process, is, is the language that would go before, before the voters. You know, to, and also, just to date, uh, you know, legal has not, City Attorney's Office has not been asked to, to conduct, a legal review or evaluate potential claims, uh, if council wants the City Attorney's Office to do that, we certainly can, but we haven't asked, we haven't been asked to, that, to this point.
Thank you. All right, why don't, uh, you know, at this point, since we've had a little bit of discussion, why don't we get someone to make a motion that we can move in second, um, and go from there, and then we can continue discussion once we have a motion on the floor? Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we continue to work with the initiative, the people, chief petitions and the initiative to create language, um, as quickly as possible to get it to the voters in November, so we can continue on.
Second, and again, when is the deadline, James, for this to be submitted?
So if council wants to use its referral power, um, to, to refer the measure to the voters, um, August nineteenth is the, is the submission date, uh, the initiative process, is an August tenth deadline, but that's one that primarily falls on the chief petitioners getting sufficient verified signatures.
Good, all right, we can start a minute, do we have a second? Okay. Mike with a second, all right. All right, um, folks, I haven't said anything, um, yeah, but, um, you know, I think everyone here knows, and I hope everyone in this community probably knows, is that, I am willing to talk about affordable housing and housing for all people at any time. I made the offer more than once to the petitioners and didn't, were not picked up on it, which is odd to me, because I'm not only the executive director of a housing organization in this community, and have been twenty-three years, but I also was the founding organizer of Housing Newburgh, which brought a whole lot of things to you, uh, for those who were on the council at the time, I think probably Elise and Denise and maybe Stephanie. So that I find curious, um, again, as been mentioned, I'm very disturbed by the, by defeating the process, particularly when we're talking about a charter amendment, we are not talking about just general resolution, we are talking about actually amending the charter, which is a high bar indeed. I'm similarly concerned with the very vague language, I've mentioned it more than once. I, I'm also very, very concerned of potential liability to the city, I don't know that it's been mentioned here, but HB three one one five just came out where it made it state that cities are liable, if they, if they cannot allow people the place to live, right? Martin versus, versus the city of Boise, right? That was a law, once again, the city of Boise was forced to pay one point three million dollars in bill, in additional beds, they were also forced to pay four, four hundred and seventy thousand for attorney's fees. Listen, I, you know, I, I want to applaud the petitioners first off, for one thing, you just gave so much credence to council goal number three, right? Which I don't think I have to remind the council, but maybe some of the listeners, it is to promote development, housing affordability, to address such things as homelessness, transitional, and workforce housing. Um, to think that we have not been doing this really is baffling to me. Because the last thing I heard, we were catching grief because we did a study on car camping. You know, I'm sorry, folks, we're talking a lot about the petitioners intent, and what their intent with this legislation is. I have not heard a single word about what the true intent is. All I can read is these lines that were clearly borrowed from the city of Bend organization. For me, I don't want to be the guinea pig. I'm sorry, let somebody else do it, let Ben be the guinea pig. Heck, they got a lot more resources than we do, and I'll also say they've got a heck of a lot more of a homeless problem than we do. Knock wood, please, the other thing I will say to anyone here, anyone who wants to sign this petition, I'm going to tell you, in my estimation, it is punitive. It is punitive for those who are least defendable in our community. We are demonizing these people to the point where they cannot be near our children. Really? Seriously, people? Now, if you want to sit down and talk about what we can do to do this, I would applaud it. I would applaud forming an ad hoc committee at this very moment to get it, but let's get some people that know what they're talking in about, let's get the providers in there, let's get YCAP, let's get all of the people that are providing services to the community court that sees these very people continually. Let's not make conjecture, let not, let's not pull out videos from Portland neighborhoods. Come on, people in McMinnville have much more experience than we do with this, because they just faced a heck of a problem. Oh, and by the way, there's no one here, no one on this council, there's no one in this city that wants to see people living in cars. We don't want to see people living in tents, and we need to do everything we can to do it, but this punitive restriction, this, this demonization of people is unfair. And honestly, I would expect more from the city of Newburgh, to be very, very honest with you. With our background, with this community, I would expect more. And then to think that this thing is going to be pushed through with the language that it has, I'm sorry, if I sound a little bit, uh, pent up, maybe it's because of the work that I've done for thirty years of my life. Okay, I'm sorry, and if there can't be more compassion, I don't know what to say. And if you don't, if, if we do not understand the concept of impassioned, of compassionate enforcement, like what we're trying to do with the community court and all those providers, then I, then I'm at a loss. I'm absolutely at a loss. Go ahead, Denise.
I, I think you're missing a point I have, is that we do nothing today or with this, it will go to the voters in May. I would love to create something better prior to that. So what we are sending to the voters is something that makes sense. It is not about homelessness, it is not about any of that. I've spent just as many nights in a homeless shelter taking care of people as anyone in this, on this screen. So don't, don't talk to, about compassion, what I am asking for is us showing that we can work with people to get something done, because none of us want people living in tents, and neither do they. They, they'll build, help us build, they don't, it's not about building a homeless shelter, it's about letting people live in tents, and that's, you know, improper shelters for them, and, you know, their thinking. So if we work together with them to get this done and get it on the ballot, something we can all live with, we provide the opportunity to fix it now, or we do nothing, it goes in May, and we take a chance, and we listen for eight months to rhetoric about one way or the other, and misinformation, disinformation, that's what we'll be hearing. I am not anti-homeless. I am not anti-compassionate. There is no one who is, maybe, Elise and I, we have put the work in, we do the work. I feed people, I, I started the food program, I started the homeless shelter, so don't tell me I don't have compassion. What I want is good legislation to come through in a way we're all working together to get the best thing done. And I know that's hard to understand, because we all want to fight, but I want to fight. It's not, it's hurting our community when we keep doing this over and over and over again. That's my point.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just ask you a question now, and Denise, you, you sent me this in writing, and I was actually, and I, I hate to call you out on this, but I will. I, you know, I firmly believe in, in the idea of conversation, I believe that there's communication, but to me, this petition is too far down the line. If we really care about homeless, right, if we really care about it in our community, then we need an actual action plan in the city of Newburgh to address the issue. We need to know how many beds we can provide, what the shelter should be, what the systems ought to be, and how they're going to be provided. We cannot do that as a city council alone, in my mind, we need the experts who do this work. I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
Who said that wasn't a thing?
Okay, if I could, if I could, please. But I do not see this petition, which again, to me, is demonizing homeless, again, that's my interpretation, as a step, as a way to do it, again, I am perfectly willing to talk to any one of these people, I'm willing to bring it up at the next council meeting, providing we can put it on the agenda, to form a subcommittee, or better yet, better yet, to form a committee, as we have seen so successfully done in this community, whether it's for the pool bond issue, whether it's for central school and our, and the cultural center, whether it's Housing Newburgh, to get together, put some suggestions together for the homeless problem in our community, bring it to council, and do what we can, this to me is not the answer, here you go, there you go.
It, it might be your tone that scares people. I'm trying to be kind to, to the community to move us forward in a way that we can work together, and there isn't anyone here in this room that isn't willing to solve the problem. Like I said to you, I want to go upriver though, as well as just working on this, what's causing the problem. It's place, letting HUD get away with what HUD's getting away with, those are the things I'm talking about. So it's not a simple one fix problem, it's a million fix problem, and we're gonna, but if you want to let this go to the initiative, you know, okay, fine, but we're gonna get what we're gonna get, and we're not gonna work with anyone.
Okay, Denise, if, if you wouldn't mind a little respect, let's, let's not, uh, do not confuse tone with passion, okay? Thank you, Mike, go.
So I, I, I agree with, um, with Denise, I'm sorry, Mayor, the, the whole point, you don't like what the wording is. That's okay, I get that. But why don't we work on fixing it, work with them to fix it and come up with some better wording? That's the whole point of this, if you don't like it, then let's work together and not just send it on down the road to eight months. And, and I don't believe that they, they're not demonizing the homelessness, they're just wanting to make sure that we don't have this kind of stuff going on next door school, that shouldn't be a problem with anybody. But let's, let's fix the, the language, let's work with that, and I think that that's what we, that's what we all should want to do tonight.
Jefferson.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I would love to continue the conversation, continue, uh, trying to work with, through this with the right people at the table. Obviously, this started when we, um, were considering legislating something, uh, we had a review done, the review came back, the very people that brought forth this petition trashed that review, trashed that process, and now we're introducing a new process. You know, we could push back and, and pull away from them, or we could, we could come to the table at this point, like we should have at the beginning, when the first document came to us, and, and move forward. I agree, um, and, and I just think that we have an opportunity right now, and we can either take the opportunity, and, and see where it goes, maybe we get it to, ready to go for a ballot, uh, maybe we don't. And if we don't, then, you know, we keep working on it until May, or whatever that deadline is, but that's where my mind's at right now.
All right, Denise. Okay, not Denise, Elise.
All right. Um, I think I first just want to say, um, on the council, you know, I think each of us comes with our own experience and our own story, and, I mean, as I've gotten to know each person on this council, I believe the intent is absolutely good, period, and I don't, I, I desperately want to do anything we can in our community to prevent, um, another, um, war, culture war that has happened, um, over the school board, and I have committed myself as a public official that I will work across the aisle to figure the, to figure out how to make compromise, and, um, I'm super uncomfortable with all of this, I mean, you know, like Denise, like Rick, you know, my, my day job is supporting a lot of, um, individuals that are houseless, and if I'm honest, I've had conversations with, people in the initial stages pre-petition, um, that made me upset, cry in my car home, you know, labeling, um, you know, people in tiny homes as being more of a threat to schools and people in houses, because you can assume what someone can, you can assume something of someone that can, that can afford a single family home. Um, and I, you know, I go on the record all the time and say that my, me and my husband are both in recovery, we, you know, people in my family have had active relapses in my house on one one two South Main Street, right? Right next to Naps, and have wandered through the, you know, through the neighborhood, walking around. And, you know, I make a good living, and so does my husband, and we are in a single family home. So I take a lot of, you know, deep empathy and compassion when we talk about houselessness, the way that I feel like we're starting to engage in, and I don't think that because you're on the other side of the aisle on this issue, that you're not compassionate, I, I don't think that, I think that our experiences have led us to different conclusions. I think that's, that's, that's the crux of it, we all want to live in a safe community, period. I would argue that, um, what type of house you live in doesn't define the threats of violence or the, the, the security of safety. Now, I also, in talking with Bill, and I said I wasn't going to talk about content, but here we go, because everyone's going for it. In talking with Bill, one thing that I was, um, you know, excited to learn, that we both agree, I don't think tents are good enough, I don't want to see Newburgh become Portland, absolutely no way. And I would always support legislation that provides as many housing resources as possible, which is why I've been a fan of these cottage clusters, right, because it is an attempt, because it is a temporary foundation. And so, in the language of the petition, I struggle with the, with the phrase permanent foundation, just laying that out there. That's kind of my sticking point of the entire petition. I can, if, if we were to get legal stamp of approval, it's the permanent foundation that I would need to have changed in order to get there. Um, I could live with foundation, but permanent foundation I couldn't live with. So again, I, I just really want to like call on each other that, you know, we don't have to become what ended up happening with our school board. I, I don't want to be a part of something like that. Uh, I said to Peggy when she was elected, you know, I'm sure we have different political beliefs, but I believe that Peggy, it, you know, once, very similar things in Newburgh that I do, that we have very similar values at the end of the day. And, you know, as much as it is fun to have divisive issues in this town, because let's all be honest, like, I think some people are thriving on some drama, like, I really want us to be better than this. So, right now, I, unless we have legal stamp of approval, that we are not at risk of being sued by the state for jeopardizing state statute and the permanent foundation, that's where I, that's where I struggle and where I would need to get to.
Yeah, if I could, Mike, uh, Mike and Stephanie, just one second, then, Mike, Stephanie, then Peggy, here's one concession that maybe I could make. Yeah, I think, you know, again, the language is very concerning, I think the language is concerning, again, one thing I'll remind you, folks, remember though, we, we have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility to protect the city, right? So if we are putting forward something that opens the city to liability, I think we are remiss, and that concerns me greatly, so if the petitioners were willing to send this through the AG's office, to the Attorney's General's office for, to, for some form of blessing of the content, I might discuss it. But, you know, short of that, I, I, I don't think we have any way of knowing, you know, what, what the potential liability to the city is. And Lord knows, as I said before, you know, Ben doesn't know, so go ahead, Mike. Mike, then Stephanie, then.
Okay, I have just a general question, and I just wanted to ask Elise, um, you said you didn't like the idea that there would be permanent foundations, why, why is that? I mean, if we're providing, if there's going to be some sort of housing, why, why wouldn't it be a good idea to have a permanent foundation? Why, why do you not feel that way?
Well, I mean, in everything I've read with state statute around manufactured homes, manufactured homes, which we have six hundred of them, are not classified as permanent foundation. And, you know, I think that that's really troubling, um, in itself. I also know that, um, cottage clusters, which, you know, you know, being transparent, could be tiny homes on a slab of a, of a permanent, of a temporary foundation. I think that has to be in our toolbox until we can get to a place, like Bill says, you know, that we have the ability to actually house people in this community. But I do find it ironic that, you know, we all agreed, I think there was the, the, the tone in the room last city council meeting, when the seven women spoke about their living conditions, all of us agree it's unacceptable, all of us have compassion, and are like, oh my gosh, we need to jump in there, right? But the reality is, the people that I'm talking about, that this, I'm concerned this petition will jeopardize, are those seven women. That could so easily be them if they didn't have their housing voucher, right? Like, these are the, these are the people that have lived in Newburgh for years, some of them decades, that I feel compelled, that we have to make sure that we have legislation or approved, you know, city charter that is humane. And I agree with Bill that tents are not humane, we can do better than tents. I also have concerns with RVs, that's where I can get there on RVs. But, you know, when it comes to a permanent foundation, that is a high, high bar and a lot of money that we just frankly don't have to be able to stand up quickly, we need runway solutions, and then we need long-term solutions.
Hey, if I could just elaborate a little bit on that, Mike, uh, with the permanent foundation. Again, six hundred units of housing in our community, which is the largest single stock of affordable housing that we have in Newburgh, are manufactured homes, generally not on foundations, right? Not permanent foundations, even single lots are not always on permanent foundations. My concern is this, the way the legislation is currently written, if the city wanted to go in and do some work at some of these manufactured home parks, some of the units which are dated well beyond the HUD, HUD guideline, they're much older, to save and retain those homes for people to live in them, we would have to take it to the voters. And as it's currently written, it could be two years out before we do, because of the even year thing. So, again, I, I'd say again, I don't think it rises to the level of a charter amendment, and I'm concerned about the legality, Stefan.
Thank you, I think the bottom line for me is that this, as it's written, is legislation, and I don't want to be conflicted in pushing through poor legislation when we know we can do it better. Um, and again, I know Counselor Bacon has said this, but I haven't heard from the chief petitioner, if, if they're willing to concede and how they're supposed to do that. I don't know that we can have that complete conversation in a way that I could vote to put this through before August nineteenth, which is the deadline, but I do think in eight months, we could have conversations around how to do good legislative on this, that satisfy hopefully most people, I, not everyone, because that isn't going to satisfy everyone. But I think, uh, it's the most possible right thing. You know, I'm honest, and that, you know, when we're talking about tents, um, most of us spend a lot of time driving through Newburgh, and that's a really huge issue for us right now, not saying that it couldn't be, or that it won't be, but I think to push through something like this before we've had those conversations on an issue that we're not seeing more from us than those tents, I think is, um, I just don't think the foresight is there, and so I would absolutely support putting together an ad hoc committee, bring the chief petitioners on to be part of that ad hoc committee, and let's do some work on this. But I don't, this is work that can be done between now and our team, and I am not going to support pushing through poor legislation just because, um, we've decided that we can't spend some time having conversations around that. So, I mean, bottom line for me is, I do want to compromise, I do want to have this conversation, but I want to have it in a planful and meaningful way, and to include everyone at the table. And again, um, that includes the chief petitioners, and so far, they just, you know, tonight, we heard from the chief petitioner, and really, there was no concession on to having conversations about this. So let's invite him to have some cool conversations about this and spend some time on it, rather than pushing through, um, what could be not only poor legislation, but illegal legislation.
Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so many things are kind of going through my mind as each person talks. First of all, I, I am completely in agreement with you regarding to make sure we don't put ourselves or the city in legal jeopardy, number one. The other thing I was thinking is, we have the HUD issue, you know, the affordability, that, uh, these people having to live in homes that are not kept up reasonably, but the thing with homelessness or affordability, it has so many facets. And I will tell you, if we are helping Newburgh people get back on their feet, I'm all for it. If we are going to provide homes for people who are right now down in Francis Square during the day, waiting till they can go back to their low bar shelter, um, and just stay high all day, and then they, they tell their buddies, hey, come to Newburgh, it's, you know, we've got this no bar shelter. I don't want to attract people, I don't think any of us want to attract people who are not interested in being helped. So you can't help people until they're ready to be helped. So that, I'm just, I guess I'm saying all of this, that there are so many facets, so I don't think we can, um, try to address every facet in one piece of legislation, but I'm certainly happy to, to jump in and be on a committee. And I think, yeah, anyway, I guess that was it, um, something Stephanie said resonated with me as well, but it's gone.
Thank you, Peggy, go ahead, Denise.
My own, I just want to, they, they have been willing to make changes, um, they changed things Rick was concerned about to make sure the wording was right, um, they took out the two-year, if we, the, um, I sent it to you in an email. So I, I guess, I, I mean, here, here, I, if we don't know, that's, that just means we go, the initiative continues and we see it in May, that's fine. And, and I, I don't care, if people want to sit down and get this ironed out and figure it out, and get it on the November ballot, then we don't have to see it in May, the way they wrote it, because they can't change it now, it will have to go the same way it is written. If we do it, we can change it and do the referral in the way we want it written, and I'm, I'm not sure people are understanding that. And I don't, you know, I'm, I, I can't say it in any other different ways, I've said it like five different ways now, and that's, that's all there is. They're willing to work on it, we could do it as a referral, we could make sure it's legal before we send it in, or we can let theirs go through and figure that out then. That's where we're at, and they've been willing.
Um, you know, Denise, you know, I saw, I saw something, but the rest of the council didn't, um, so I think that they're at a bit of a disadvantage as.
Right, and, and I get that, I get, well, I can't send things out to everybody either, so there's, there's that little piece too. But once we decide if there's going to be a subcommittee to work on it, then you'll get it.
Okay, yeah, no, and if, if that's it, I, okay, um, Jefferson, go ahead, and then, and then.
Yeah, a point of clarification, um, we could still send a, a referral or referendum after the nineteenth, or anytime between now and May, I mean, is there, I mean, their signatures will carry forward if they keep the same, the same wording, I don't know, you know, those signatures go away if they change the wording, I assume.
That's true, go ahead, uh, Elise.
Also, a point of clarification, so the, the motion on the table right now is to, is it to have a conversation this week and get to a final draft, to then come to the council on eight fifteen for a vote? Or is it to send forward the petition as written to the. Or is it to send forward the petition as written to the November ballot? What, what are we voting on? Is it the first one to have a group meeting today? I mean, this week, not today?
Yes, to have, to work together to get something we can all live with to send to the referral and then if they agree with their agreement, they will stop their process.
So it would have to, okay, just go with me. So it would have to
That's good.
go to, have a meeting, then go to legal review by, by James, then come to city council on Monday, next Monday. And we would vote then to send it as the committee has submitted it to the November ballot.
Or not.
We, right. So that's what, is that the, is that the motion on the table?
Is that? Denise, we can't hear you. Could you please restate the motion? And we're going to try for a second again, just to confirm what we're.
Sue, could you help me? Because that, that was a long time ago, man.
It was.
I'm sorry, I did not take notes. I think it was something to the effect of work on some language for a future, a future measure, but it didn't specifically state which election.
Okay, why don't, why don't, Denise, would you withdraw that and restate?
I will withdraw if the second will.